Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, November the 2nd, 2016, at 7:34. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to yield this opportunity for our chief to deliver the invocation.
Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Dear God, we thank you for your countless blessings, your strength, your compassion, your mercy, your grace, and above all, your love. While we may not often do or say what we should or do or say things we should not, you still incessantly rain down upon us your kindness and forgiveness regardless of our actions, inactions, or thought. Once again, our country has witnessed the ravages of an attack on our law enforcement community. Two police officers in Iowa were sentencedly gunned down as they sat in their patrol vehicle. This act once again places all our law enforcement officers in the fear of constant peril and in a state of imminent danger. Our hearts, sympathies, and prayers go out to the family of these fallen heroes. Yesterday afternoon, a Miami Police Department officer who I knew well and considered a friend was also killed right here in our community. George Sanchez was 10 months from completing his police career of 20-plus years when he was rear-ended as he was stopped at an intersection in southwest Miami-Dade County. Thrown nearly 100 feet by the impact, he died a short time later at the hospital. Dear God, please accept these and all fallen police officers in your heavenly kingdom and provide solace, strength, and comfort to their family and friends. Help all your people, dear Lord, and make our actions more pleasing to you that we may remain in your grace. Change us as only you know we need changing and strengthen us in your faith and love. We also pray for our community, those that are suffering, that are infirmed or lonely, especially as we approach this holiday season. Strengthen and resolve in action our elected officials that they may make the right decisions, those decisions you would want them to make for the betterment of all. We ask this, dear God, in your most holy and blessed name. Amen.
Chief, can you continue with the pleasurable allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You seated?
Thank you, Chief.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candy Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item four.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for October 19th, 2016, regular city commission meeting.
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. At this time, do we have any items that you would like to take out of order, please?
The Commander, we have counsel here present, and I believe that in deference of the fact that he has to travel a long time, I would suggest that he call first.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you read that item into the record, please?
Those items are item 11A and B. Item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11A, request for mitigation of lien for code violations of the property located at 6540 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, represented by Attorney Jose Machado.
Please come up to the podium. Before, Mr. Machado, before you speak, I would like to hear from our attorney and Mr. Penna. If you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This is a property that was cited on, first in 2013, and then again, a repeat violation on July 22nd, 2015. And it was for violation of other animals, keeping pigeons and coops on the property. The property was cited, the previous violation occurred on November 18th, 2013, and the property was cited, it's a corporation that holds it, West Miami Holdings LLC, and the violation was mailed to 8500 Southwest 8th Street, which is just keeping pigeons in the rear yard in coops, which is against our code.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any structural violation, any...
No, that's what we're here for tonight.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the violation had been cleared. Is that a notification, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe that the administration might have a...
Recommendation.
Recommendation. I believe that you should...
Before that, I would like to hear from...
You should hear from counsel.
From counsel.
Name an address, please.
Name an address for the record.
My name is Jose Machado. My address is 8500 Southwest 8th Street, Suite 238, Miami, Florida, 33144. I'm here on behalf of West Miami Holdings LLC, which is the owner of the property at 6540 Southwest 16th Street, where the violation occurred. I'm here on behalf of representing the West Miami Holdings, is also my Ali Santana, which is one of the managers of the LLC. We're here before this commission because of the violation that occurred on the property and frankly, the failure of the property owner to get the initial notices. We know they were sent, they were sent by certified mail, and they were sent properly. Unfortunately, their offices are with about three or four different other businesses within the same suite number around the same time. The property manager that had been managing the property for about the last five or seven years prior to that left the employment of the company, which left a little bit of a gap, and frankly, they just did not get the notices in 2015 and 2016. Immediately when they got the notice of the lien that was received on July 29th of this year, they immediately, Mrs. Santana, Mrs. Santana immediately contacted the city, and by August 10th, there was already a notice of compliance letter that was issued by the city at that time. Way back in 2013, when the initial violation took place, we asked the tenants who are here, present, and can testify if you so desire, to remove the pigeons, which they did back in 2013. They're informing us that they never brought back pigeons after that date. You know, the cage where the pigeons were is still there, but there was never pigeons any since that point forward. So, at this point, we present to you and we ask that you would mitigate the damages, and we understand your time, your efforts, the city staff's efforts and time on this, but we would appreciate if the commission would agree to substantially mitigate the fine, especially considering the fact that, you know, the rest of the property is in good order.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Manager, let's talk about financial.
Right.
How much it cost the city and what's your recommendation?
And again, each case is weighed on its own merits, the time that the file has been opened, the taxing of our resources, meaning our employees, the board, and the inspections and the paperwork. Therefore, there is a total outstanding lien amount of $10,889. I have conferred with Mr. Penna, and he agrees that $1,500 would cover the administrative expenses with the file since the inception of the first violation. Again, I believe we're dealing with an issue of a repeat offense. I understand that your testimony this evening is that the pigeons weren't brought back. We did hear from neighbors who actually complained, and so that's what initiated the second case. So, having said that, you know, we have a considerable amount of time in, you know, working with the file. So, that would be our recommendation, to be fair and consistent as we have been with other cases.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I would like to hear from the Commissioners. Any comments, any questions?
I want to make a comment, Mayor. Normally, in cases like this, that the correspondence was lost in the large office, and this family owns several properties here, and this company owns several, well, this company is owned by people, so a family. They own a lot, some properties, more than two or three, and they never have a problem. I think we should go to the $1,000. That's my proposition to the table. Because the lien was $10,000, and I think instead of the $1,500, I propose $1,000. Because as a residence with several properties for years, for years, and that's my proposition, $1,000.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Any other comments?
Yes. Mr. Suarez, I respectfully would like to disagree with you. If my recollection is correct, this is not the first time I've heard West Miami Holdings come before us for mitigation, so...
With the pigeons?
Not pigeons, the actual company, West Miami Holdings, has been on our agenda before for mitigation.
No.
First time?
Yes, first time.
Never come before us before?
No.
Must have been a similar named company that came before us.
But no, this is the first time they come to this.
Okay.
They never come before.
Or is this a rental property?
Yes.
So, the persons that are here are the owners of the company, not the renters?
The owner of, one of the owners of the company is here with me, which is Mrs. Santana, and the tenants are also present.
The tenants.
The two people in the background.
Perfect. I would like to keep it at the recommended amount that the manager quoted, because that means it covered all our expenses. I would also like to add, if those cages can be removed completely, I don't want them there, because that could, because this was a repeat offender, okay? So, one, two, three strikes, you're out. If they come before us again, we don't mitigate. Because we're mitigating on a second offense of the same thing. So, I'd like to add, keep it with the manager's recommended mitigation amount. The cages are gone, and if they comes before us again, there is no mitigation.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Blanes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, once again, you know, we talk about fines, we talk about violations and so on and so forth, and we never talk about the residents, the neighbors, you know, that live adjacent to this property, and, you know, the kind of things that they have to deal with. I am sure that many of the neighbors called and complained many, many times. And, you know, again, it is the property owner's responsibility to make sure that the rules and regulations are being followed.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So, I concur with Commissioner Rodriguez, and, you know, I agree to what the city manager with her decision to charge the $1,500.
Okay. Any other comments, any other suggestions?
I was thinking of charging a lot more, so...
Before, Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution before anybody makes a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I want to make a comment.
Let's read the resolution, and then we continue. So that way, we have the resolution in place.
Item 11B, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from West Miami Holdings LLC on code enforcement lien for court violations of the property located at 6540 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if famine in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, provided for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Okay. Commissioner Suarez?
Well, I want to comment this, in the same way that Commissioner Rodriguez was run, believing that this company was before in some problems, the same way I want to present to the table, that a family that owns property here for over 30 years, and they has been for over 30 years, right?
I believe, I believe, yes.
More than 30 years. This family owns property here, several houses, and never have problems, and they has been paying their taxes, and they has been... Now, if they rented a small house, and the people put some pigeons there, and there is a problem, and they come and they solve the problem, we should not try to go, you know, against them like we are wolves, hungry wolves. We should understand that if they are, never have a problem before, and they own several problems, because I own one property, and pretty sure you only one property, you own only your home, like us, they own here several, and they never have problems, the city should have some kind of common sense, that I think with $1,000, we cover most of the expenses, right?
Yes, I can't tell you to, an exactitude, but I can tell you...
Well, Mr. Penna, with $1,000, we cover most of the expenses, right? At least...
The majority of the expenses, it's very hard.
But I think, well, my proposition to you, consideration with the residents, that persons that have several properties, they never have problems, we should have common sense. And if the lien was for $10,000, just make the litigation for $1,000.
Okay. Wait, 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 hold on a second. One more time, one more time. Commissioner Suarez, are you done, for now?
For now, yes.
Yes. Okay. Commissioner Blanes?
Commissioner Suarez, you also got to take into consideration that the owners of this business don't live here. This is a business proposition for them, purely a money-making proposition. It is a business, and quite frankly, they probably don't care, as long as they get paid their rent, they pay their taxes, you know what? But the bottom line is what they're looking at. So, you know, I don't know...
Wait, 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 I'm going to stop you wolf right now, right now, okay?
May I clarify him?
No, 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 hold on a second, hold on a second. I'm the chair, and I'm going to stop this right now. I'm going to make it really simple, okay? We have things in play...
No, but I have the right to clarify something.
No, but I'm the chair, and say I'm stopping this right now.
Well, you have to give it right.
No, I don't have to. I don't have to give you, no, no, listen, I, these gentlemen are here, okay? You know, they're, you know, they're presenting, you have your opinion, everybody has their opinion, but we have to respect everybody's opinion. We can't force the opinion of somebody, okay? With all due respect, I don't, Commissioner Rodriguez, respect your opinion and mention what she mentioned. Whether she made a mistake, or whatever you want to call it, I don't think it's a mistake, it's a misassumption. I think the fact is, we also have to listen to the manager. We cannot force the manager. The manager made a recommendation. This is not a, this is not a negotiation table that you sit at the table and you go back and forth. You know, it's, we, we have never been hungry wolf over here. We've always have paid attention to each case, and we have been fair to each case. So, I don't want to go on the path of, you know, if there is a business, the fact, the fact that they have properties for many, many years here, and this is the first violation, and is, we're not talking about structural, and, you know, we're talking about pigeon, that right there, it says a lot about the, you know, the property owner. So, we don't even have to talk about anything else. That in itself is an example. So, I, if you feel strong about it, this is how we do it. You know, you put a motion on the table, we go through it.
We have the right to speak.
Make a motion.
My right to speak?
What's your motion?
No, before the motion, I'd like to explain to Mr. Blanes that this family, they are no investors. Mrs. Santana, she grew up here in West Miami. She lived here for 20 or 30 years. Her family lived here for many, many years. Their parents, she, the brothers, the uncles, this family lived here in Miami, they grew up in West Miami. They are no investors that came from out of town. You don't know them.
Commissioner?
That's what I want to clarify.
Okay, perfect.
That's my point.
This is not the danger, I mean...
That's my point.
But, listen, something real quick, but, the city manager is telling us that it costs us $1,500 to mitigate, to take care of this issue.
Give or take.
What, we're going to charge the resident at large the $500 difference and make them pay for it after the violation that they caused?
Very simple.
And all the problems that they put the neighbors of...
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Yes, sir. I respectfully suggest that somebody makes a motion.
Yeah, okay. Motion to accept the city manager's $1,500.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On the motion, Commissioner Suarez, have you voted? Commissioner Rodriguez?
First, Mrs. Santana, I apologize for thinking I had seen you come before us before. Must have been a similarly named company, so my apologies. I vote yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes. Motion passes?
For one, motion passes is for the amount of $1,500 to be paid in what period of time, Mr. Mayor?
I will yield the counsel as soon as possible. I will say 30 days, is that okay?
That is fine.
Okay. So, 30 days, otherwise, it will go back to the original amount.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, all, for your time. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mr. DeGrae, once the resolution is executed, I'll forward it to you.
Thank you.
The resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. By the way, clarification on the last item, we need to include the removal of the cages as part of the item, okay?
As a provision. Okay, Mr. Commissioner. As a condition of the approval of the resolution.
Yes. Any other items to be taken out of order, or shall we go back to the original order of the agenda?
You could go back to the original order of the agenda.
And that will be item five, report to the city manager.
I have no written report this evening, however, I would like to remind you that the November Thanksgiving celebration at the West Miami Community Center chaired by Commissioner Luciano Suarez is right around the corner. We have calendar, you all, and thanks to his efforts, the Miquessuque Tribe will be donating the turkeys for the Thanksgiving meals for our senior citizens, both the homebound and the congregant ones. So, thank you, Commissioner Suarez, for your assistance.
The 16th.
On the 16th.
Yes.
That is correct. So, we have calendar for the event, and we've also sent out a calendar for the delivery of the turkeys.
Thank you. Next item?
Item six, report of the city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Lately, I have been receiving a flurry of responses or appeals or defenses to tickets violations on the red light cameras. Ordinarily, I would not worry about this, because there is tons of litigation throughout the state of Florida. I understand that ATS has contracted with some lawyers, and up to now, they had not been, City of West Miami had not been involved in the defense of any of this. If you remember, a long time ago, when this plan was originated, I suggested to the commission to hold harmless, to request a whole harmless indemnification agreement from the companies, which at the time, they didn't, but then again, they did, and so on and so forth. But now, the City of West Miami is being called as a plaintiff, and I have received, in here, I have 12 cases that have come to me the last couple of days. The ticket clinic, I understand by the captain, have been doing this all throughout the state in order to somewhat burden the judge that is handling this particular case in the 11th Jurisprisycode and the 3rd District Court of Appeals. This case has gone out, all the way out to several district courts of appeals, and, but this is the first time that the City of West Miami has been listed as a plaintiff in something like this. Ordinarily, when you have a violation of the traffic code, which is, this is one, the citation, the heading, reads the state of Florida versus the defendant. In this particular case, this particular lawyer, Golden Associates, I filed two pleadings. One is the state of Florida versus the defendant, and it says Traffic Division, blah, blah. And then the second one, on the same case, it says the City of West Miami versus the defendant. I mean, this is news to me. So, when I started receiving this, I contacted the captain, and the captain called ATS, and ATS called me, and there was a flurry of calls, there have been numerous calls, and I finally talked to one of the lawyers from West Florida, which is handling most of the cases throughout the state. But the issue is that they are attorneys, and they collect money for their work. So, I don't think that the cases should be left by themselves and see what happens. So, in this 11 cases that I have received, I spoke to Sam Zansit and from West Florida, and then Reeb from ATS today, and they said, "Well, this is going to court recently," and so on and so forth. Then I mentioned, who is going to handle this particular case? I said, "Well, this particular case will fall along with the other cases that have been filed throughout the state of Florida." But what I'm afraid of is that this motion, there's a motion to dismiss. So, if somebody does not appear, the motion to dismiss might be granted for lack of prosecution. So, we certainly are between a rock and a hard place, because in order to defend this, we have to send an attorney to defend it. And this particular case, I don't know that legal cities would be willing to do this. We have 12 cases that, what is the fine again? What is the fine?
$148.
$148. I don't know that legal cities are going to...
$158.
$158.
$158. I don't, I don't think that the legal cities are going to come and defend the city for $158. But the issue is that if we let it go, we're going to establish a precedent.
Per incident.
I'm sorry?
Per incident, per incident.
Per incident, okay. We're going to send a, establish a precedent here. So, I think that this should be answered, at least in, I know the judge that is handling this case is Judge Leachman, which is one of the foremost and best judges that we have in the judiciary today in the state of Florida. I think that at least, we should have a motion for clarification, and tell the judge, "Judge, the City of West Miami actually is, should not be a plaintiff here. It should be the state of Florida." Yes, sir?
I have a question. Are these cases, 12, or 14, or 15, whatever the cases are, are they within the City of West Miami, or this is throughout?
No, no, the City of West Miami.
City of West Miami.
There are hundreds throughout the state.
A hundred, so 14 or whatever are within the City of West Miami. I totally agree with you. I mean, if somebody doesn't answer, they can grant the motion. So, you're the legal counsel, tell us what we need to do, and then, you know, we...
Well, I think that in this particular case, I usually don't represent the city in litigation, but I think that we've, we cannot hire an attorney for $158. But we might set a precedent if we do not answer, or we do not do something, okay? There's a stay at this point by Judge Leachman. Stay means that the defendants, in other words, the violators, the alleged violators have an opportunity to appeal. They have exhausted the administrative appeal, they have exhausted the legal appeals, now it comes back to Judge Leachman, and what I would do is, I would file a motion for clarification in front of Judge Leachman and say, "Judge, first of all, on the same case, you list a plaintiff as the state of Florida. Now, in the second case, you list a plaintiff as a City of West Miami. Tell us that whether this is correct," which I don't think it is, I think it's the state of Florida versus the defendant, not the City of West Miami. It is like, for instance, if I commit a violation and I'm sighted with careless driving, it's the state of Florida versus me, it's not the city of Doral, or the city of Miami, or Metropolitan Day County versus Jose Villalobos. So, I think it's totally improbable, and I think it's a game that these people are playing, to see, they filed hundreds of this. I don't know how many violations we have, but by filing 12, that means to me that they might have filing a lot more, you know?
Right.
How many tickets have we issued? You have an idea?
I would have to say, oh, but I could say there are about 800 a day or something.
That would be...
That would mean they're all violations, that means that would be due.
Right. So, that would mean that we are... Right, uh, so that would mean that we are peril of, uh, losing you, we don't do something.
Okay, so, between you and the manager, can you give us some guidance, and if you need our blessing?
Yes.
Put a cap, uh, whatever we need to do, please?
We have a, a small budget contingency fund for these types of situations that may come up, and I would encourage you to allow Mr. Villalobos to file the motion for clarification, so that the judge can clearly define exactly the intent of the, of the suit, and then we will, if, if further clarification or further defense is needed, then we would make a phone call to the League of Cities and see how the league will handle it. But I think at this stage, um, I think that we should empower Mr. Villalobos to file.
By the way, the legal cities have a, a, a limit of $5,000.
We have a deductible of $5,000.
The first $5,000 have, have to be funded by the City of West Miami.
Exactly, so...
Uh, the, the apparel is that, uh, number one, they have a notice of appeal, uh, not, plea or not guilty, and also notice to produce documents. So, that means that we have to tax, uh, the police department. Get the, uh, police officer that, uh, handles this particular case, train him, okay? In order to be consistent with the, what the law is, uh, so, it, it might, it, it might, uh, mushroom into a fantastic peril, uh, for what the monies we have already collected, uh, from, uh...
The violations.
The violations, which have been in the, to move.
I, I can't, I mean, I, I don't know exactly, we'd have to go back.
No, no, I mean, overall, let, let's say last year or something.
Well, you, the net profit or the gross receipts?
Let, let, let's go ahead and forget about that. It's, it's just a peril, okay?
Yeah.
So, I'm going to get together with the manager, and then we'll draft a motion for clarification, and, uh, at least in this, I mean, all we need is, uh, for the judge to say or order, uh, the, the, the attorney for the defendant, uh, to do the right thing. I mean, the judge very well might come and say, "No, no, that's okay, I mean, that's the way it should be, and then we opt the creek, I mean, we have to defend it." And then the officer will have to appear, and we'll have to go over and start all over again. But I'm sure this, uh, firm is making a, a mint of money. And, uh, as I say, they're filing thousands, I think.
Okay, so, so, okay, so why, why, why do we start, okay, do we need to set a cap and then make a motion?
You do need, uh, you need, um, a motion to authorize the city attorney to file a motion for clarification so that the city is present at the table, and, um, Mr. Villalobos, um, I don't have a written proposal from his office. Again, he's reviewing information that he just received, but I, I mean, I haven't discussed this with him, but I would set a cap of $1,500.
By the way...
Because we have to contemplate that Mr. Villalobos will probably have to appear on behalf of the city.
By the way, uh, it's not in the agenda today, so, uh, this is for your consideration.
We can come back and ratify it by resolution.
You can come back and ratify it in the future, but it should, nothing that is not in the agenda should take...
Okay, so for, for now, all we need, all in favor, the blessing?
Motion, motion for whatever they need. We will bring back the resolution and the request for ratification and expenditure of legal fees at the November sixteenth, uh, city commission meeting.
Okay. Next, uh, any, anything else, uh, Mr. Yellow?
No, sir.
Okay, next item?
Next item, report of the city engineers, non this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I do have a report. My report is, uh, something that I spoke a little bit, uh, earlier, eh, during the seventy year anniversary celebration committee meeting. As I mentioned before in that meeting, um, currently, I have a lot of things on, on my plate, and, um, you know, like I said, uh, my heart and my emotions said that I should continue with this, but, uh, my logic tells me that, um, I have a lot of different things, uh, being the mayor, being, among other things, one of my daughters getting married, uh, you name it. And I feel like I'm spreading myself too thin, so what I would like to do is, uh, step down from that committee, and I have a suggestion of a person, um, that will step into my shoes, and, uh, that person, uh, I believe, um, and, and again, I have to hear yes or no, and of course, uh, that person, I believe, is, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez. And, uh, if that's something that you feel up to, and this, uh, you know, commission blesses, I would like to, uh, hand it over to you.
Will help.
It would be my pleasure, as long as my colleagues are in agreement.
Okay. Thank you. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one more thing about this past case, I'm sorry that I forgot.
No, no, it's okay.
Interestingly, uh, this attorney, uh, did not notice ATS or Weiss-Rota, or any other attorney, just the City of West Miami.
Very interesting.
So, it's, it's something that, uh, you know, ATS is handling the class action lawsuit. So, uh, they have been paying all, all along, and there have been a host of hearings. I don't know, maybe twenty or thirty or more hearings, and, uh, it had never been addressed to a particular city. And yet, with the City of West Miami, they never noticed, they, they noticed the, uh, the Attorney General.
Interesting. Okay, back, uh, to committee report, anything else on committee report? Okay, next item?
Item nine, cities and presentation, Elliot Asbell.
Please do, come up to the podium.
Elliot Asbell, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida 33157. I had no intention to speak this evening, uh, two things have occurred, and let me address what I can, I don't know if I consider one more important than the other. The last thing is this, uh, report by the city attorney. This has potential to be a very big bargain. Hopefully, it gets nipped in the bud. I have confidence in the judge, and the strangeness of this leads me to have even more confidence in the judge, and hopefully, hopefully, the judge, uh, and I have confidence certainly in the city attorney. Hopefully, this will end with the judge dismissing us from this case and let it proceed in the manner it has been proceeding all along. I, however, do want to make a pledge, and I don't like doing this, so I'll give a caveat. I don't like open-ended situations. But similar to the mayor, in terms of too much on his plate, I'm very concerned about the fiscal well-being of the city of West Miami, I always have been. I do not like the city being attacked, especially frivolously, and especially when there can be cost. So, what I will say, I will hold in abeyance, but I'm probably willing, you got at least a $5,000 deductible, if the League of Cities is going to take it. So, I think I could commit to the $5,000 deductible, so the city would not be, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem that it could be more explosive than that. And I can't commit to something in the blind. So, this evening, I will commit, I believe it's going to get dismissed, and the city will be off the hook. If in fact, the wisdom of this commission and the manager and the counselor is to bring the city, League of Cities into the ballgame, and the city, League of Cities is willing to take it on, which is another question mark, uh, you're subject, as I understand it, to a $5,000 deductible, and I would pledge that I would cover that deductible. I don't want to see the City of West Miami suffer, uh, under, well, any circumstance, but certainly, under this very, very strange situation, okay? So, that's the first thing that prompted me to speak tonight, when I didn't think I would. The second thing I want to say is, with all due respect, and in life, I am faced with, I can respect an institution or an office, and maybe not respect an individual, or I can respect both. And I'm under a dilemma, okay? This evening in particular. To know that that camera is going on, to know that the residents, as I, have to listen. I certainly believe in freedom of thought, I certainly believe in freedom of speech. However, when one is to assume office and sits on a dais, it is incumbent upon that i- individual, to a degree, sacrifice, not their freedom of thought, but their freedom of speech, especially if that speech is going to become derogatory and denigrating to the body as a whole. Especially, I've never been, and I've been in very contentious elected offices and meetings throughout my lifetime. Mr. Mayor, you are the chair. You have a gavel. Forget the degradation, forget the insistence on constantly speaking, trying to convince someone to a point of view. When the chair rules, make a motion, and then we discuss, and an arrogant individual is going to insist, "No, I do not respect the power of the chair or the authority of the chair," then this whole commission is worth nothing, if that's permitted to happen. I would respectfully submit, I lose my time and I lose my number. But we just talked about files and files and files. If I pulled files over the last year, or last five years, or last ten years, how this particular individual, as a vice mayor, as a councilman, has constantly, meeting after meeting, injected his thoughts, took people to task, sometimes nastily, or sometimes like a Cheshire cat with a smile, which is nasty, and refuses to respect the ruling of the chair, then something's got to happen. Maybe he ought to resign. Thank you.
Next item?
Item ten, unfinished business, non this evening. Under new business agenda item, next item would be eleven C, status report of the comprehensive plan by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it brief, in your pocket, you will find a letter dated October 28th, 2016, from the State of Florida, Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, and it is a letter, uh, addressed to Mayor Mujina regarding the department's, uh, completed review of our proposed comprehensive plan amendment pursuant to the statutory requirements. Basically, the letter advises the mayor that our amendments are, uh, pretty much, um, okay in the eyes of the department, and that we should pursue to adopt with, uh, final, uh, our final process within 180 days of receipt of the agency comments. That means we are already within that window of 180 days. We anticipate, and we recommend that we have our first, uh, reading on the ordinance, uh, the public hearing on the ordinance, the first meeting in December, and that would be December 2nd, if my memory does not, I'm sorry.
Seventh.
Seventh, December 7th, so I wanted to make sure that you will be available at this meeting, you will be present, because it is an important issue that the city moves forward with, so that we can have the, uh, the, um, a full commission here, um, to discuss, uh, in the public hearing, the, um, the comp plan in its final approval stages.
Is that a convention meeting date?
Yes.
Okay.
The, uh, heading and the ordinance has already been, uh, redacted, uh, and, uh, the drafts have been submitted to Mr. Penna, to the administration.
Yes, Mr. Attorney, but what happens is that the, the deadline, I, and the, the publication, uh, deadline is, uh, period is different from a regular ordinance.
Well, I, I understand that, so, uh, but it's already there.
Yes.
Initially, we had thought of November 16th, we need to push it back to meet the statutory requirements for, um, publication. So, you will see this again in a public hearing fashion on the seven, December 7th, unless otherwise instructed.
Okay, can everybody check their calendars? I'm okay with it?
I'm okay.
Okay, so, we're fine?
It's, it's a meeting day, it's a regular meeting day.
Okay. So, that's all for that item?
That is all for this item, the corresponding paperwork is here to attach.
Okay, next item?
Item eleven D, submittal of the five-year City of West Miami Transportation and Transit Plan pursuant to the requirements by the agreement between Miami-Dade County and the City of West Miami for the use of the half-cent tax administered by the CITT, city manager.
Thank you, and I will yield to Mr. Penna in a minute. Uh, Mr. Mayor, on Friday, November 4th, we have a deadline to submit the city's five-year, um, transportation and transit plan, uh, that will basically be our, our, our chart or our process to follow within the next five years, with the use of PTP money, which is derived as a result of the half-cent penny tax, which was voted upon back in, uh, November of 2002. That being said, I will yield to Mr. Penna, uh, so that we can recommend to you a list of projects that should be funded over the next five years.
Mr. Penna?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, as you know, all our traffic circles have been completed at this point, so, uh, we usually budgeted about $45,000 a year for, uh, to build one per year. So, what we're going to do, if you agree with, is, um, we're budgeting the same amount, but to light the old, uh, traffic circles, uh, to mimic the new ones. And that way, everybody has the same type of traffic circle that we have in the old section.
With the LED dot, LED light.
By the way, has anybody in the neighborhood property has said anything about traffic, or the lighting?
Oh, they love it.
They love it.
They love it, okay.
It's very pedestrian-friendly, and it's, it's security and safety, I think it's a tool for law enforcement.
The reason I ask is because I see that there, the light levels are higher than the other, uh, okay?
Mr. Mayor, I've actually had residents comment on how much they like it.
Good.
And if we could do them all, so, and I believe I've had this conversation with the city manager.
I, I, I heard...
I was hoping that could be done in the future.
I heard...
This is good news. This is very good news.
I heard the same thing, so, I just want to be certain.
Excellent.
Okay?
Um, with this said, um, this commitment could also help us pursue a grant. Hopefully, the State of Florida will see it fit to fund us. Again, we just finished successfully the, um, the grant to build the balance of the circles with the new lights, and so maybe they will come back and take a look at funding our, our lights, and we can match, and we could do more than, than one or two a year.
I thought that we were done with building circles.
We are.
Yes, retrofitting to accommodate...
So, we, we, we will be retrofitting the existing circles, the, the ones that do not have the lights.
Correct.
When you say retrofit, we're, we, are we installing new poles, or retrofitting the existing?
No, everything's new.
Will be brand new?
Yeah.
And how long do you think this project would take, or what is your projection?
We have twelve, depending on what the bids come in at, we have twelve circles, so, if, uh, if we're able to fund two a year, it would take us probably about six years.
So, two a year is what we're looking at.
Okay. So, what do you need, our blessings?
Uh, you, we need to, uh, adopt by motion of the commission, by resolution, actually. We need to adopt the five-year transportation plan, so that we can submit it to the CITT by Friday.
Can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item eleven E, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to transmit the five-year transportation and transit plan to Miami-Dade County Office of the CITT in accordance with the agreement with the City of West Miami for the use of said funds, providing for transmittal, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Fun, motion.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, as you vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, item F?
Next item, item eleven F, request by the Office of the City Manager for... for permission to close city hall for non-essential personnel on Fridays, December twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, and on Friday, December thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, in observance of the two thousand and sixteen holidays, by city manager.
Madam Manager?
Mr. Mayor, as you know, I'm very fond, and, and we recognize the work that the office staff does, and everybody puts forth maximum effort. People leave sick days on the table, and annual leave days on the table, all the time, because they're very committed to their work. So I think that the city should give something back to the employees during the holidays, time to be with their families, and so that is our request, to close those two days, which are really very slow in terms of traffic, and people coming to city hall to pay bills. Those are very busy days of the year, so, with your permission.
Motion.
Would like to give back.
Okay, we have a first and a second, eh, call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item eleven G, request by the office of the city manager to cancel the second regular city commission meeting of December, as customary for the holidays.
Second, I mean, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you, go to the order.
I have also one thing required.
Commissioner Blanes?
No, no, go right ahead, please.
Well, I wanted to end this on a really good note, but I'm sure that Commissioner Rodriguez has something really good to say, too. The other day, I was at the recreational center, I went there to judge a custom, Halloween custom contest. And I noted that one of our employees, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Manager, her name is Ira Sema?
Ira Sema.
Ira Sema Ramos.
Ramos, Ira Sema Ramos. And I was observing this lady, work, tend to her duties, and as she was doing this, she was also caring for a, a young resident, which is mentally and physically challenged. And he happens to be a family member of, a good friend of ours. But, just seeing her interact with, with this young man, and, and seeing him being able to, to be there and partake, you know, all the festivities, and, and, you know, have a place where he can, other than, than being at home, where he can actually be with, with someone, and, and have some joy and some happiness in his life, and, and you could see it by looking at his face. I mean, this person was happy, and it was because of this lady's doing. Somehow, she's, he's taken to her, and, and she is a, a good soul, because she has really, goes above and beyond what she's supposed to be doing to accommodate, to have this, this young man spend some time at her, at her rec center. So I was really touched by that, and I think that we should do something for her, because that's very commendable.
It is, and I'll have, I'll report further than that. To add to what the commissioner has observed here, this lady is basically charged with the maintenance and care of the facility. She has taken on this responsibility out of love, and out of compassion, if you want to call it that, just so that this young man has a place to go to, as Commissioner Blanes said, and spend some time away from his, his, his world, and his world is, is very different than most children. So, I agree with you, Commissioner Blanes, she really has walked the extra mile, and each child like that should have a place to, to enjoy, to come out, to recreate, to interact with others, because I think that that will enhance or improve his condition in some way, or at least give him a few minutes of joy. So, I agree, sir.
I, I totally agree, too.
Mayor, I have a question.
Eh, I, I got Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez first, and then...
I'll be brief, that's what makes us so special, our employees make us the type of city that we are, so, thank you, Mr. Blanes, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Captain, I wanted to commend our pumpkin patrol, I was out, and they did, as always, a wonderful job. Also, I noted, on Halloween, I was out, we had a lot more families out on our streets this Halloween than before, a lot of young families. So that speaks to, to how, while we're doing things, we have a lot of young families moving in here, which is good, it's good for us. And finally, I want to publicly say that I'm going to use tonight as a learning experience, and I will not rely on my memory before I check with staff. So, me saying that I thought I had seen that company on our agenda before, I will next time ask Mr. Pena, Mr. Pena, has that company been on our agenda before? So I'm going to rely on the experience of staff, and knowledge of staff, before I rely on my memory.
Good question, good observation. Commissioner, Commissioner Suarez?
Mr. Villalobos, a very short, short answer, please, this is a short one. You are going to ask for a, you are going to ask for a clarification opinion, right? It's what you are going to try to get, right?
Yes, I'm going to try to stop that particular attorney, or any other attorney, from flooding the city of West Miami with individual complaints such as this. And so, what I'm going to do, is I'm going to file a motion for clarification, asking the judge, what, who, who is actually the plaintiff here? Is it the state of Florida, or is it the city of West Miami?
Perfect, perfectly, I, my question is because, as a commissioner, and I think all of us, I just was interested in, in, in that opinion for the clarification, that's what I ask. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
You clear my mind.
Thank you, anything else, then go to the order, okay? Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.